Good evening. The sixty-fifth meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order for folks who are partaking in today's proceedings. If you could please ensure that your electronic devices are, if not turned off, at least silence at this point, so cell phones, electronic devices, whatever. At this point, our invocation this evening will be delivered by Overseer Lamont Brown of Beyond the Walls Christian Ministries. At this time, the floor is yours.
Father, we thank you for this privilege and this honor to be in this place on this day, for this is the day that you've made, and we're grateful and we rejoice in it. We ask so, God, that you would forgive us for all of our sins, and as we have gathered, God, that you would set our mind on your agenda. God, we pray for each tier of leadership concerning our city. We thank you, God, for every person that's assembled in this place. We ask, God, that your Spirit would abide, guide, and direct us, God, and you be glorified in our gathering. We thank you and we honor you, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. At this time, now, we're going to state the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, we're going to have our first showcase, and it's going to be done by the Oblete Sisters of Providence. To the chambers there with us tonight, Sister Rita Mitchell, no, Rita Michelle Proctor is going to do the presentations.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. On behalf of the Oblete Sisters of Providence, the first Roman Catholic religious community of women of African descent, I greet you and I thank you. A special thank you to Dr. Dennis Castillo for doing the research that prompted this resolution that we will receive today. Our presence in Baltimore, Maryland began in eighteen twenty-eight with the establishment of Saint Francis Academy located on East Chase Street. Saint Francis continues and is in its one-hundred-and-ninety-fifth year of providing a Christian Catholic education for the children of Baltimore and beyond. We are happy to have one of our sisters, Sister Anthony Dishman, recognized and honored for her service during the cholera epidemic of eighteen thirty-two. She selflessly cared for those with the cholera until she contracted the disease and died. In the words of Father Nicholas Hector Jubert, our co-founder, who wrote in eighteen thirty-two in his journal, I quote, "This sister had a disposition that was sweet and loving. She was naturally cheerful and would have rendered a real service to the society. But God was pleased with the sacrifice she made. She was naturally kind, well-known for her charity of the sick. And since she is a victim of her zess, we can with just reason consider her a martyr of charity." End of quote. Thank you for the recognition of Sister Anthony Dishman and who gave her life in service to the people of God. May God's peace and blessing be with all of us.
Amen. Thank you so much, Sister Rita Michelle Proctor. You know, Baltimore is filled with history. And just to kind of understand and know, imagine a hundred-and-ninety-four years ago in this city when African-American women decided to come together and establish literally the first organized effort in the entire world of Black nuns and start an institution that ultimately lives out to this day with really, really rich East Baltimore tradition and heritage. We stand on the shoulders of your organization, and for all of those in attendance tonight, we literally stand on your shoulders, and the City Council wanted to recognize you in an appropriate way, and we wanted to bring you out tonight. So if you could all come and join me up here in the center, we have a small token of our appreciation, respect, and love for you. If you guys could stand in the back and have the sisters stand in the front. Chairman Stokes said the sisters are in his district, so you know he's going to be here. Look at that picture. So the resolution reads, "The City Council of Baltimore Resolution. Be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to the Oblete Sisters of Providence in recognition of your one-hundred-and-ninety-four-year history as the first successful Roman Catholic sisterhood in the world established by women of African descent. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented to you on this thirtieth day of October two thousand and twenty-three, signed by myself, President of the City Council, Nick J. Mosby, and all other members of the council." Thank you so much. You good?
Good.
This change?
Police bills, they had them in the wrong committee, that's why you didn't get them.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed to the adoption of the journal. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the journal for the October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting and the October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found beginning on page two of tonight's agenda. Will now turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-four-four-four, Charter Amendment, Inner Harbor Park, for the purpose of amending the provision dedicating for public park uses the portion of the city that lies along the northwest, south, northwest, and south shores of the inner harbor, south of Pratt Street to the water's edge, east of Light Street to the water's edge, and north of Key Highway to the water's edge, from the World Trade Center around the shoreline of the inner harbor and including Rashfield to permit multifamily residential development and off-street parking within the dedicated boundaries of Inner Harbor Park, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsor, Costello.
The body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could speak on all three companion bills after the third is introduced.
Yes, yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
This bill will be assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-four-four-five, Charter Amendment, Baltimore City Police Department, for the purpose of establishing the objectives, powers, and duties of the Baltimore City Police Department, defining certain terms, creating the role of the Police Commissioner, and establishing the Commissioner as the head of the department, providing for the appointment and confirmation of the Commissioner, establishing the powers and duties of the Commissioner, establishing the powers and duties of police officers, and submitting this amendment to the qualified, no, providing for police officers' enjoyment of certain immunities and defenses, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsor, Conway.
This bill has been assigned to committee as a whole. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-four-four-six, Zoning, C-5-I-H, Inner Harbor Subdistrict Amendment, for the purpose of amending the description, C-dash-five-dash-I-H, Inner Harbor Subdistrict, and amending the bulk and yard regulations for the subdistrict. Sponsor, Costello.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-four-four-seven, Landmark List Exteriors, Thirty-One-Ten Elm Avenue, for the purpose of designating Thirty-One-Ten Elm Avenue, Block Thirty-Five-O-four-B, Lot Zero-Zero-Six, as a historical landmark exterior. Sponsor, Ramos.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-four-four-eight, Urban Renewal, Inner Harbor Project One, Amendment Twenty-One, for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Inner Harbor Project One, amending the development area controls for certain development areas, amending the land use and proposed zoning exhibits to the plan, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Costello.
At this time, the body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm introducing three bills today. They're companion bills for the revitalization of the inner harbor. All of our colleagues, you will be offered an opportunity to have a briefing prior to hearings being scheduled on these. Spoken with Vice President Middleton, we don't anticipate hearings for these bills until the January or February timeframe. First, there are three bills. The first one, twenty-three-dash-zero-four-four-four, this is a charter amendment. What this does is essentially confirm pursuant to state code, which is already in state code, that commercial uses include residential uses. It expands the ground lease area from three-point-two acres to four-point-five acres, and it enables parking solely underground, completely concealed from view. The second bill, twenty-three-dash-zero-four-four-six, is an amendment to the C-5-I-H zoning classification. That zoning classification only exists within the eleventh district. That changes the height restriction from a hundred feet to unlimited height. By making this change and having the U R P refer to the underlying zoning, the U R P then enables unlimited height. And finally, Council Bill twenty-three-dash-zero-four-four-eight, that is an amendment to the inner harbor U R P. This does a couple of things, removes development controls within the U R P, makes building requirements subject to the underlining C-5 zone, enabling all uses and requirements from C-5 to be utilized for development areas. Two, it reclassifies Development Area Fourteen from public to commercial public to allow for construction of the retail component of parcel D, which you likely heard about this morning, limiting the size to three stores and a maximum of twenty thousand gross square feet. And finally, number three, reclassifies Development Areas Thirteen and Fifteen-A respectively, which are the Pratt Street Pavilion and the Light Street Pavilion respectively, to commercial residential. As you may have heard from the press conference this morning, there is an incredibly exciting effort underway to revitalize the inner harbor. That is an over five-hundred-million-dollar investment in that area. Specifically, it will include residential to help make the project economically viable. But more importantly than that, it opens up sightlines and view corridors for the inner harbor to make that more inclusive for everyone, and also increases the public open green space by almost five acres, which I think is a much-needed and necessary improvement. The project team for this has done an extensive amount of community outreach, touching nearly thirty thousand people throughout the city through community forums, community meetings, door knocking, et cetera, and has really made this project about not just the neighborhoods directly surrounding the inner harbor, but around neighborhoods throughout the city in East Baltimore, West Baltimore, North Baltimore, South Baltimore, that wouldn't normally be engaged about a project like this. So there will be multiple opportunities for public input, not just related to the three bill hearings that the Council Vice President will be announcing toward the end of the year. There will be U DAP hearings as well as planning commission hearings. Specifically, there will be a U DAP Concept Design Meeting on November sixteenth. First Planning Commission Hearing on the Legislative Package will occur on November thirtieth. There will be a number of developer community feedback sessions occurring throughout this process. There will be a U DAP Design Development Meeting on the master plan in January of two thousand and twenty-four and other milestones throughout the process. So again, each of our colleagues will have an opportunity to be briefed on this. If you'd like to get that set up, please let me know. I anticipate those briefings occurring in the November, mid-November to early December timeframe to answer any questions that you or your constituents may have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you did an amazing job kind of laying out where we are with it and how we kind of proceed forward. You know, I just want to remind everybody that, you know, this is a moment in history. You know, forty years ago, folks reimagined the harbor, and now us as council members, as community leaders, as citizens, will be able to reimagine another inner harbor two-point-oh. But over five-hundred-million in private investment alone, it will significantly change kind of the makeup and the activity as relates to twenty-four-by-seven, having residents this is right on the harbor, is truly a huge undertaking, and it's going to take each and every one of us. Obviously, it's in Councilman Costello's district, but it truly is a citywide project. So just like we had the discussion about the peninsula, I was about to say Port Covington, and that's a citywide project, this is like it. So please stay abreast of all the hearings as well as all the information. I know that there's going to be a tremendous amount of questions from your constituents throughout the city, because again, this is truly a citywide project. So thank you for your leadership on this effort so far. Chairman Costello, with that, this bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, please read the last bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-four-four-nine, excuse me, Public Safety, Baltimore City Police Department, for the purpose of repealing subtitle sixteen of the Public Laws of Baltimore City, creating a new article in the Baltimore City Code designated Police Department, defining certain terms requiring the promulgation of certain rules and regulations, requiring the Police Commissioner to maintain the records of the department, requiring that the department be composed of a certain percentage of civilian employees, establishing a procedure for redistricting police districts, providing for collective bargaining and negotiations relating to direct compensation of police officers, establishing certain provisions relating to the qualifications, appointment, promotion, and probation of police officers, permitting police officers to earn witness fees, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the Baltimore City Police Department. Sponsor, Conway.
At this time, the body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you are aware, Baltimore City is the only jurisdiction in Maryland without complete local control over its police department. In two thousand and twenty-one, state legislators authorized a ballot initiative that would decide once and for all whether all, whether Baltimore City would have control of its own police department. Question H, of course, passed by a large majority in November two thousand and twenty-two with nearly eighty-three percent of city residents voting in favor. However, while the ballot question was overwhelmingly approved over nearly a year ago, limiting language on the powers of the city as it exists still exists in the state law. The Baltimore City Council now has the authority to legislate on the Baltimore City Police Department, but it exists in a pretty gray area, even though, of course, it is a Baltimore City Police Department. In coordination with the administration, I am introducing two bills on local control, one for the city charter and another for the code. After these bills make their way through City Council, the Maryland General Assembly will need to strike language in the code, limiting the City Council's ability to legislate over the police department this upcoming session. In order for us to have our bills ready for the Maryland General Assembly in time, we must begin our process now at the city. We can't wait any longer or else we'll end up risking missing Annapolis's session in two thousand and twenty-four. We're working with the administration, of course, the Council President, on these bills because this topic is, of course, of the highest concern for the city, and it should be presented on a united front. So I want to thank both the administrations for this so far. We also have a commitment from the Local Control Advisory Board that they will have a full report on their recommendations by the time of our first hearing on November twenty-ninth, and I want to thank them for their hard work on this topic over the last two years. Bill twenty-three-dash-zero-four-zero-five, mentioned earlier, is the first of two bills, and it is the charter amendment. This is the side of things that would require approval by the voters of Baltimore in November two thousand and twenty-four, and it will codify charter language for the Baltimore City Police Department. Twenty-three-dash-zero-four-four-nine, the second of the two bills, will clean up sorts, will be a cleanup of sorts for the city code and the public local laws as we add them to the police department and the city code. It is my hope that the charter amendment and the code will be an end, but also a means, a way to achieve the outcome that we've all been working for since two thousand and twenty-one or honestly before two thousand and twenty-one, and I look forward to working with you all, my colleagues, and of course, the members of the public with the feedback that we'll get during these hearings, because it is our duty to realize the will of the voters and make sure that we ensure local control for the city of Baltimore. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is another bill that obviously, obviously has citywide implications. You know, many of your constituents are going to have, ask questions about it. You know, the problem is, you know, they voted on it a couple of times through referendum in the general, so many people, even lawyers and lawmakers, are like, what's the gray area? Where are we at with local control? So with that, we will probably do some type of education campaign around it. We want all council members, again, to participate, maybe like a town hall, Mr. Chair, style, just so folks can kind of ask questions and understand and know what they should expect come the council hearings, as well as hopefully with the passage of this bill, what are the next steps to just like lay it out to them. So please be on the lookout for that. Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Chair, on this issue. Thank you to the administration. Nina, please send that thanks to the mayor and all the folks that Mr. Chair has been working with. With that said, this bill will be assigned to committee as a whole. At this time, you can find the consent calendar. Section A at the back of the agenda is the motion to approve the consent calendar. It's been moved in probably second, all's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the consent calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before I do so, I'd like to turn it over to Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we will be in short titles for the duration of this meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. First committee we're going to go to is ECD. Madam Clerk, please call the bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-nine-three, Street Encroachment, Thirty-four-Twenty-four, Tune Street.
Body would like to recognize Vice President of the Council, Sharon Green-Milton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-three-dash-o-three-nine-three, this bill was heard on October seventeenth and was recommended favorable by the committee. I move the bill favorable.
Second. It's been moved in probably second, all's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Madam Vice President, we didn't do finding of facts.
We don't have to.
We don't have to? We're good? All right. Well, this bill will be printed for third reading. Was that an amendment? I'm sorry.
No.
That was just, yeah, so this bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the next bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-nine-four, Street Encroachment, Two-Two-Nine, East Montgomery Street.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-three-dash-o-three-nine-four, this bill was also heard on October seventeenth and was recommended favorably by the committee. I move the bill favorable.
Second. It's been moved in probably second, all's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-nine-seven, Rezoning, Western Side, North Lehigh Street, Southwest Corner, Eager Street, and Western Side, North Lehigh Street, fifty-two-dash-seven, Street fifty-two-dash-seven feet south of Eager Street.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty-three-dash-o-three-nine-seven, this bill was also, this bill was heard on October twenty-fourth and was recommended favorable by the committee, and this bill did have findings of facts and is on my colleague's desk. I move the findings of fact.
Second. It's been moved in probably second, all's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts are now adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second.
I mean, not as amended, I move the bill favorable.
We got you. Second. It's been moved in probably second, all's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-nine-nine, Plane Unit Development Amendment, Benhurst Park.
Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Bill number twenty-three-dash-zero-three-nine-nine, this bill was also heard on October twenty-fourth and was recommended favorable by the committee. The finding of facts is on my colleague's desk. I move the findings of fact.
Second. It's been moved in probably second, all's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts are adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And I move this bill favorable.
Second. It's been moved in probably second, all's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-four-two-three, City Property, Renaming Cottage Avenue Park to Candy Straight Park.
Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Bill number twenty-three-dash-o-four-two-three, and this bill was heard on October seventeenth and was recommended favorable by the committee. I move the bill favorable.
Second. It's been moved in probably second, all's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Now we're going to turn over to Rules and Legislative Oversight. Madam Clerk, please call the first bill.
EA two-three-dash-zero-two-one-zero, Craig B. Jeter, Bureau Head, Silent Waste, Department of Public Works.
Body would like to recognize Chairman of the Committee, Chairman E.T. Schleifer. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held these two executive nominations on October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and we are approving them both favorable, so I'd like to move this nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second, all's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The confirmation will be noted. It's accepted. Madam Clerk, please call the next one.
EA two-three-dash-zero-two-one-one, Ann Warrell Young, Member, Fair Election Fund Commission, District Seven.
Body would like to recognize Chairman of the Committee, Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
I'd like to move this nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second, all's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the confirmation will be noted as accepted. At this time, we'll go to third, bills on third reader. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill two-one-dash-zero-one-five-nine, Procurement Zero-Emission Vehicles. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-four-three, Zoning, Conditional Use, Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District, Variance Six Thirty-three, South Montford Avenue. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-five-six, Zoning Modifications to Research and Development Facility Use. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-six-one, Zoning, Conditional Use, Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District, Variance Sixteen-Thirteen Edmonton Avenue. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-seven-five, City Property Renaming, Reach Partnership School Field to Center to Robert L. Dalton Stadium. President Mosby.
We'll just come back.
Yeah, we're going to come back to that at the end, yeah.
We're going to do it at the last, the last bill. Yeah.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, last bill. City Streets.
I'm on the wrong one, that's fine. City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-nine-six, City Streets, Closing a twenty-foot alley and two ten-foot alley. alley and two ten-foot alleys. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Before we move on to committee announcements, we still have one remaining bill, twenty-three dash zero three seven two. Before the clerk calls it in, I just want to let the council body know that the sponsor of the bill is asking that we hold off and voting this out on third reader. He's still working with the administration on some loose ends. We want to make sure that we hold that agreement in place, but we want to make sure that we properly do it on the record. So we're going to read it in, and he's going to request us to hold it over. We need a majority vote to hold it over, and it will appear on third reading again at our next council meeting. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill two-three dash zero three seven two, Office of City Establishment and Administration.
At this time, the body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill, Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. You summarized it for me. I'm still working with the administration on this bill, and so I want to make a motion to, to hold the, to hold Council Bill twenty-three dash zero three seven two until our next council meeting.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second to hold this bill over to the next council meeting on third reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this will be held over till our next meeting. Thank you, Chairman Costello. At this point, we're going to turn to committee announcements. Chair is when you hear your committee, if you do have an announcement, please stand. First up, we're going to do, I'll do the committee as a whole. I see my friends from all inclusionary groups back there, thank you for joining us tonight. Affordable housing is critical and very, very, really, really important to this council and to this body. You know, obviously, this bill replaces a bill that was in place for almost seventeen years that only resulted in about thirty-seven units throughout our city, which is really shameful. This is a bill that I carried as a council member, it's a bill that I was happy to work with Councilwoman Odette Ramos. We have some loose ends to continue to kind of clean up and fix up, but we want to make sure that folks in seventeen years can be proud of the work that we've all been working on over the past year. So with that, we are announcing a hearing tonight, so you guys can rip your signs off. Let's do a celebration of ripping the signs off. So we're going to have a committee as a whole hearing, City Council Bill twenty-two dash one nine five, inclusionary housing for Baltimore City on Tuesday, November the fourteenth at five P M. That's Tues, you'll be there. Now rip them off, let's see it rip them off, come on. I'm joking. And then the other bill is going to be assigned to the same committee, obviously, committee as a whole, that's Bill twenty-three dash zero three six nine, and that is going to be on Tuesday, November the fourteenth, the same day, at five oh one. So obviously, they'll be heard at the same time, we do it concurrently, but that's how we do it, okay? Thank you for your continued civic engagement and participating in this process called the city council. With that, we also have a couple of other bills, guys and committees as a whole. The next bill is twenty-three dash zero four four five, that's the charter amendment for Baltimore City Police Department. That's what Chairman Conway talked about. There are two hearing dates for that, and that's going to be Wednesday, November the twenty-ninth at five P M here in council chambers, as well as Wednesday, December the sixth at one P M, again, here in council chambers. The second bill, twenty-three dash zero four four nine, that's Public Safety Baltimore City Police Department, that will be heard again on Wednesday, November the twenty-ninth at five thirty-one, no, at five thirty P M in the city council chambers, as well as on Wednesday, December the sixth at one thirty in council chambers. Actually, we have to suspend the rules for those past two bills for twenty-three dash zero four four five, as well as twenty-three dash zero four four nine. So at this point, I'll ask to suspend the rules for twenty-three dash zero four four five, charter amendment Baltimore City Police Department. Have a motion on the floor?
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. Do we need to take roll call on this? It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, those hearings will be announced, I'll do it again, just for the record, that is Wednesday, November the twenty-ninth at five P M here in city council chambers, as well as Wednesday, December the sixth at one P M here in council chambers. We also put in a motion to suspend the rules to allow us to announce the meeting tonight, twenty-three dash zero four four nine, motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, to announce again on the record, that is three, two-three dash zero four four nine, that will be on Wednesday, November the twenty-ninth at five thirty in council chambers, as well as Wednesday, December the sixth in council chambers. With that said, now we're going to call up our amazing Vice President, Sharon Green-Milton, for E C D announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one cancellation, one to reschedule, and three new schedules. So the Economic and Community Development Committee has canceled Bill number twenty-three dash oh four three nine, zoning variance, sixty-seven oh nine, Western Run Drive, because it has to be heard by the planning commission first, and then we'll reschedule that one. Bill number twenty-three dash oh three five one was originally scheduled to be heard on October twenty-fourth, and it has been rescheduled to December fifth at two twenty P M here in council chambers. And then Bill number twenty-three dash oh four two nine will be heard on Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at two forty P M here in council chambers, and that's the Community Impact District Management Authority Board of Directors. And Bill number twenty-two dash oh two nine zero will also be heard on November seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at two fifty P M here in council chambers, and that's the South Baltimore Gateway Community Impact District Management Authority Board of Directors Term Limits, sponsor Porter. And on, and Bill number twenty-one dash zero one one seven will be heard on Tuesday, January ninth, we're in the January already, at two P M here in council chambers, and that's the termination of administrative parking regulations, and the sponsor is Councilwoman Ramos. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Next up, Education, Workforce, and Youth. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, November the sixteenth at five o'clock on Bill number twenty-three dash zero one eight R, and it's a hearing on athletic trainers in Baltimore. We know what happened to Elijah Goom over at Mervo, and I think we owe his family and all the athletes and athletes that want to play sports in our city to make sure they have athletic trainers actually at all those sports events. Also, the same day, the Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing twenty-three dash zero one nine zero R at five oh one, and that is a hearing on Baltimore City Schools payments to vendors. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Chairman Stokes. Next up, we're going to go to Health, Environment, Technology. Thank you, Madam Chair. Public Safety Government Operations, Rules, Legislative Oversight, Ways and Means. Do you have Ways and Means or no? For, oh, for Ways and Means, yeah. At this time, the body would like to recognize Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at five P M, the Biennial Audience Oversight Commission will hold its next meeting in council chambers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And then last but certainly not least, Finance and Performance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. On Thursday, November ninth at three P M, the Finance and Performance Committee will be having an agency briefing for the Baltimore City Police Department, that's here in council chambers at three P M. And then on Thursday, November sixteenth at three P M here in council chambers, the Finance and Performance Committee will have an agency briefing for the Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to regular announcements. I have to make a public apology. Leading up to the hundred and thirty-fifth Poli-City Game, I talked a lot of smack in this building and all throughout the city of Baltimore, and we got absolutely destroyed. As you can see, Madam Clerk is still wearing her black and orange, but I wanted to just make a public apology about all the stuff I talked, and for twelve years in a row, we lost again. With that, with that, are there any other regular announcements? Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a moment of silence request, a moment of silence request for J. Frederick Mottz. He was a senior judge in the U.S. District Court, and one of my constituents recently passed away. Thank you.
Any other regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none, Madam Vice President, if you could take us out?
The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, November sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at five P M. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the now two hundred and twenty-four victims of homicide this year, also Senior Judge J. Frederick Mottz, and just our continued prayers for our fire department and their families as we continue to get through the funeral arrangements for the second firefighter this, this Friday.
Third term of your Baltimore City Council, Baltimore, we absolutely love you.